I'd like to call everyone, welcome everybody to the June 20th, 2019 special meeting called by the Board of Education. Want to apologize first off here, that of all days to leave my glasses at home, it's today, so I'm borrowing some from Ms. Jane Gordon. I first would like to call on Mr. Jake Godwin for our pledge and vacation.
We all stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing, we have a short prayer. Lord, we welcome all who are here today, and we pray that all stay safe. And Lord, grant us all to look after them, students, parents, staff, to keep them in your prayers. Amen.
Okay, first, I'd like to consider approval of our meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to approve our agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Godwin and a second by Ms. Brittany. So, all in favor, please raise your hand. And I believe we may need a motion, Ms. Gordon, because we have two people calling in. We need a motion for roll call.
Yes, the policies provide that when you are going to vote by roll call, that that needs to be made by a motion. So, someone...
Do I have a motion for roll call voting, please?
Does that move, Mr. Bobbin?
Thank you. If we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, a motion and a second. So, then we will be going in order, then Ms. Gordon? So, let's go ahead and we need to vote on the roll call first. And do we, let's see, all in favor? Let's go ahead in order. Okay?
Aye.
Say your, just say yes or no.
Okay, yes.
Aye. Aye. And then, then, uh, let's see, Bubba?
Aye.
Okay, and Ms. Sayers?
Aye, aye.
Okay, and aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, do we have a, we have a, we have a motion and a second before on our approval of our meeting agenda? Can we go ahead and vote, please, on that? Please, in order?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Bubba?
Aye.
Okay, and then Ms. Sayers?
Aye.
Okay, and aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, all, that motion was unanimous. We do have a confirmed agenda. Here's the way this is going to end up working. I'm going to read a motion. We're going to, I'm going to see if there is a second to this motion. And after I have the motion and a second, we're going to then have discussion about, about the particular motion. I will, want to read a short statement. If there's anybody else who would like to make any additional comment, I welcome the additional comment. We'll have any additional discussion that we want to have at that point, at which point, once discussion is finished, we will go ahead and vote on the motion that I'm getting ready to present. Okay?
I would like to ask a post question. Is there going to be any opportunity for public comments?
No, not at this meeting. There is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, given the continued uncertainty of state funding required to sustain early college, and given the lack of financial support for MAST at the county level, and given the additional lack of funding to sustain numerous teaching positions in other schools throughout our county, I move that we act on the recommendation of the Board of Commissioners to use local funds previously allocated for MAST to fund as many unfunded teaching positions as possible. This will unfortunately leave MAST, early college, high school unfunded and would result in the school needing to be closed. So, that is the motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second to motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'm going to read, we're going to have discussion on this. I'd like to first go ahead and read a statement.
Travis, who's seconded it?
That was Brittany? Seconded the motion. "I am sorry we are in this situation. We are, we are regarding MAST. I sympathize with students who attended MAST last year or who are accepted and were anticipating attending next year. I hope you can understand the situation from the Board of Education's perspective as we're trying to make financially responsible decisions that will best serve our entire school system. All other considerations aside, from a financial perspective, we would not be able to continue MAST without state funding. And unfortunately, the decision on state funding will likely not be confirmed too well until after the school year starts. We cannot continue to kick the can down the road on this. The county commissioners only agreed to fund MAST last year under the assumption that state funded would be provided. It did not happen last year, and funding is uncertain again this year. With this continued uncertainty on early college funding, the county commissioners did not feel that they could commit to continue funding MAST, and we definitely cannot continue MAST without local funding support. Regardless of the status of state funding for early college, we are still faced with reduced state and federal funding which resulted in a shortage of funded teaching position in schools across our county. So, in their meeting Monday night, the county commissioners graciously voted to allow us to keep the money originally allocated for MAST and asked that we instead use it towards funding some of the teaching positions and our other county schools, positions which would have otherwise been lost or unfunded. Although not everyone may agree, I support and agree with their, and agree with their decision. We must weigh the wants, needs of MAST students and parents against the needs of the rest of the students in our school system. I would love to be able to afford to provide a MAST experience for students across Carter County, but unfortunately, this just isn't possible right now. It's easy to look at the cases of individual students and see the benefits MAST provides to these students, and there's a desire to continue to help them. It is much more difficult to look at the big picture and see the unintended consequences that funding MAST may have on the rest of our school system and all of its students. Weighing such items and trying to make rational and equitable decisions on them is one of the toughest tasks we face. I wish everyone the best in making the best decisions possible as a result of this closure." Now, discussion on the motion and my statement.
First and foremost, what's the harm in delaying this decision for two weeks to give us the opportunity to digest the information that's been handed to us, which by the way, is changing by the minute?
Melissa, there would not, delaying anything, first of all, any additional delay would affect the hiring of teachers that much more. As we, as we hang on and wait on the hiring of teachers, the more likely the chance is that teachers will go elsewhere if they're not guaranteed positions here. And they, they very welcome patience and go on. So, there is a little bit of an urgency regarding the teaching, the funding of the teaching positions that are currently frozen and unhold. In addition to...
Travis.
Hold on, let me finish real quick. Okay? In addition to that, the other, the other, the delaying by a week or two. Tell me what good whatsoever delaying by a week or two is going, how that is going to change the funding. We are still going to have to vote regardless on whether to fund the teaching positions or MAST. We can't do both. We have to make a choice, one or the other. So, we either vote on that today, or we wait two weeks and we vote on it then. Okay? Regardless...
With more information and more options.
With more information on the state funding. There won't be any additional changes on the, the, the local funding. And regardless of if there are more hopes or guarantees for the state funding, we know that the state funding will not be finalized until, well into the fall after the school year has started. So, we think it would be a futile effort to keep everybody's hopes of, hoping that there really is going to be a possibility that there's going to magically become, there's, funding is going to materialize for this, when I think that that is a slim to nil possibility.
Travis, who is "we"? Who thinks, who thinks that? Who is "we"?
I say, I say, I say me. Okay? Then we can, then we can decide otherwise.
Listen, Travis, every single year, we deal with the same thing about, you know, the urgency of hiring teachers. And I completely agree with Melissa that there is no harm in waiting two or three weeks to get more information. We got more information this morning at nine forty-one.
And, and you think that there's going to be guaranteed funding as of, we're going to know that by, by two weeks?
No, I don't. And I want to be clear to whoever's in the audience that, you know, without state funding, we can't afford to keep operating MAST. So, I don't want to mislead anybody, but I think in two or three weeks, we will have more information. And I would like to make a decision based on as much information as I have. So, I'm not willing to...
As far as I'm concerned, today is a false deadline.
Mr. Bottoms previously gave us a deadline even before this week saying that if MAST students are going to be able to accept whatever decision is made and be able to get enrollment, get enrolled in their other classes, whatever, at whatever school they may go to, or if they're going to go back to homeschool, whatever the case may be, we don't want to keep students hanging on, hanging on longer than is necessary. And if there's a hope, if there was a hope for, if there was a hope for state funding and for local funding to all of, all of a sudden materialize, I would change my mind. But if there's not any hope for that...
Well, and I completely agree with that. But is, is Mr. Bottoms in there?
Yes, he is.
Is, is, is there harm in waiting a couple weeks? And I hate to put you in between this, but I mean, is there a huge negative to waiting two weeks?
Our, our staff will work to meet the demands of the board. Whatever, whatever is given to us, we will comply.
What's the last dates possible, Mr. Bottoms? If it was held off for the two weeks to see if the, the House is going to agree? Because that's where I'm understanding, the Senate has already agreed, but the House hasn't. What is the last dates possible?
We are still...
That he's comfortable with it?
Right. We are still hiring now, regardless of the MAST decision. We're still in the process of hiring teachers. And, and we can still hire wonderful teachers even when we get a week or two into July. We don't like to get that far, but we, we do it every year. But, but it's not, it's not a dire emergency today, but we know that the applicants, like, like Mr. Day said, you know, they, they, they can go elsewhere at some point. And so, it's hard to say exactly. But we're, this hiring in June is not unheard of by us.
Let me ask two questions, Mr. Bottoms. Okay? You're both regarding funding. And this is what the whole, everything is about. This whole decision is about, you know, we don't even have to debate the pros and cons or anything else about MAST. Right now, we're voting here on, based everything on funding. If, at the, at the end of two weeks, let's talk about state funding first. At the end of two weeks, are we going to have a finalized budget in the state and/or Senate in two weeks? What are the chances of that?
He doesn't know that.
Yeah, that, what are the chances of that realistically?
I would only be making a guess based off historical. And normally, the long session, July 1st is not their deadline.
Mr. Bottoms, I'd like to pose a question. If we do in fact receive state funding, and say it comes in the next two weeks, the amount of money that we would receive would be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, if at best possible, best scenario.
That's great.
If we receive a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that still does not fund this school. That is my issue. I have thought about this for two weeks. I'm not saying, I think what MAST does for these students, it is heartbreaking to me. This is the hardest decision. But I also have to think, if we're to cut, and we don't, we aren't to, say we are to get the state funding, we still, our local budget was cut. And our local budget was not only cut with MAST, we're looking at other budget cuts as well.
That's true.
As of this morning, we do not know, we, we're very uncertain of our local budget. That makes me very nervous, because in fact, if we do not have local budget, and even if we receive state funding, we still are at loss of teachers and MAST and everything else. And we have to look into that. I mean, we are looking, I don't want to cut anyone's school. I want everyone to have a piece of the pie. But the truth is, we can't, we can't forego all eighty-one hundred students or in that proximity basing this off of a, a poor choice on our, on our funding.
That was my second question for Mr. Bottoms. Was, real quick, hold on, Melissa. My second question was going to be, first of all, about the state funding. Did it be, we have it be state funding? You know, there's been less and less and less support at the state level, a less appetite for supporting and funding early colleges. It's, it's not just our problem, it's across the entire state. Everybody, there are a whole lot of counties that are facing this exact same problem. So, there's less appetite to fund the early colleges at the state level. But even if the state funding somehow came about in the next two weeks, which is like, hey, I would, I would bet big money that that is almost an impossibility. And I hope that, I think that a lot of people would probably agree. You're shaking your head, yes. But regardless of the state funding, we still have the local funding to contend with. We don't have the funding at the local level. We could, now, the recommendation of the county commissioners was, we have shortages, use it for the state, the positions, the teaching positions that we are, are short for across the county. So, that was the recommendation. We, so we pretty much, we, if we wanted to, that was the recommendation that our money givers made for us, use the, the funds for funding local teaching positions that would be lost otherwise. We could, they didn't mandate, you know, that was their strong preference and their recommendation. We could essentially try to buck what they said. But we would doing, be doing that at the expense of these teaching positions. So, we're looking at teaching positions for everybody across the, across the county, and we're looking at the, the MAST school. But, so if we took that chance, if we went out on a limb and took that chance and we said, the heck with the teaching positions, we're going to hold out for the possibility of, of state funding, that is a gamble. That's a big, big gamble there. And you're, you guys are looking at us. I know that your kids are at MAST and you want to see MAST, and it's helped a lot of your kids, and y'all want to see this remain and succeed. But we are looking at the entire, like I say, the entire county. And we're just trying to weigh, we're trying to be financially responsible here and trying to weigh all the pros and cons of these choices.
May I say something? Melissa, I'm going to say something real quick, and then I'll let you jump in. I'd just like to thank everybody for being here. I know it's been tough for y'all. I wouldn't want to be in y'all's shoes, and I guarantee you, you don't want to be in our shoes, because it's been tough for us. Matt, a question for you. In my opinion, you know, I've been, I've sure been on the fence about this. I feel like I've done my due diligence, and I've talked to a lot of people on both sides. But in my opinion, this morning sort of pushed me in a direction due to the fact I felt like, all of a sudden, not only was the county funding not there, but it is in a more precarious, maybe precarious is too much of a magnitude, but more of a precarious situation. And I, at this point, I'm feeling like it would be irresponsible to move forward with the funding of MAST, just because of the information we received this morning.
So, wouldn't it be just very responsible not to give everybody every opportunity? We just sent a letter in, in the editor from Mr. and Mrs. Quinn. They said, "Give us parents and staff the time to explore options, charities, grants, personal donations, fundraising. We would gladly pay tuition for all four years." We haven't looked at everything. We're cutting this short without, what, what is two weeks for us to explore every single option? Perhaps see what happens with the state? You're, like I said, this is a fake deadline. Today, this does not have to happen. We, you're right. We just got the information a few hours before this meeting. There's going to be more information that comes out, both for and against it. We, we owe this to the teachers, parents, and students who invested their time and treasure to hold back on this decision and to go back and look at everything, including asking for additional funds. We cannot in good faith vote to close MAST at this moment without giving us some time to digest the information and look at all our options.
A lot of people are very happy with you.
Well, you know, and it's not about us. We keep saying this is difficult. This is not, this is our job. We were elected to make these decisions. This is about doing what is right, having good communication, talking, pulling out all the stops. We, we've got, I mean, by the minute, information is changing. Let us, what is two weeks, or three weeks if need be? I think we need to address this to our, our, put it, it's not our job. Turn it back to Mr. Bottoms. Mr. Bottoms, let's talk about those teachers. What are your thoughts about that?
About the additional teachers?
Yes.
We know that success in the classroom has to do with class size. That, that is one of the key components. So, we, that is, that's, in our race car, that's the engine, is the, is the staff that we have. So, it is important to have teachers. But it's also, you know, we, we're getting ready to add, if, if this goes through with, most of this currently on the floor, we're getting ready to add a hundred students to our schools. So, addressing their influx into our schools will take the additional teachers just to do that. I would imagine high schools would each need one, perhaps one, or possibly two teachers to accommodate the extra one hundred students.
And I know so many of y'all touted the great benefits of the small class sizes and the personal kind of one-on-one more experience that y'all get at MAST because of the smaller school and the smaller class sizes. So, y'all are asking us, and we are having to make the decision to justify these really good small class sizes for all of your children at the expense of all the rest of the children that, throughout the county.
What about our teachers? What about our teachers?
Mr. and Mrs. Quinn, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, we, we knew that when we approved this the first time. It was a six to one vote, you decided. But we, we knew what we were stepping into. This isn't new. Now, granted, we have a new board, but our new board hasn't taken a vote on that. The last vote we took was six to one in favor of supporting MAST. But we, we knew that there were going to be small class sizes.
It's like when I was going to be small class sizes with our AP courses. My children got the benefit of that. Was that a drain on money to put my children into these special classes and to make sure that because they're a unique group, uh, group, that they, they get this special training and more money? I got the benefit for my children. We, we, we have to be flexible in our public education at what we're offering, different groups, from Bridges to AIG to this unique group that we're trying to meet.
Melissa, you have on more than one occasion, because you're a business owner, touted being financially responsible. And really, the decision, in my opinion today, is, is based on, and I think in a lot of people's minds, is based on the lack of funding at both the state and the county level.
You don't know about the state. You're, you're, you're putting the cart before the horse. You need to hold out for that. We don't...
This is the second year in a row that this, I mean, that this would end up happening. We, we, you know, we were, we were told this, told this last year, and we saw what happened.
And, and like Mr. Comer said, these things, MAST, early college programs, were designed to be self-sufficient within five years. This is exactly what we're setting up to do. And MAST proposed it prior to this last-minute information this morning was going to ensure that if we could get to three years, we were going to be self-sufficient with MAST. It was not going to be a drain.
Mr. Bottoms, where, where are those positions that really needed at the schools? The numbers were six to eight teachers needed to be hired.
We lost seven point five teachers due to the reversion from the loss of ADM when the hurricane, when we had the hundred students leave due to the hurricane. The, the state reverted money that took seven and a half teachers. Some of that was state, and as Mr. Day earlier stated, he was correct, some of that was federal money. Three of those were federally lost. As far as where they go back, we, we do that strictly on class size. As I said, we want our teachers to have the smallest classes possible. I don't have that mapped out. We know there's, there, there is a need in one of our kindergarten classes, in one of our schools. But the others, we would, we would go back and, just like we took them out, we'd look at the math all the way across the county. We would put them back in the same way and look at the math across the county.
So, that money that the commissioners are saying should go to hiring, you would know about where those positions would be added or needed for that hundred and eighty thousand?
It's, it's a math problem.
We got a little surprised this morning that, like, like, I think Brittany was saying earlier, that our, Clark was, that our, our local budget is even in a more precarious situation than we thought, even worse. So, that's even less of a, of a motivation for us to try to go out on a limb financially. It's...
And Travis, this is Bubba again. And, and look, I totally agree. And I will not support moving forward with MAST without state funding. But again, the last thing I'm going to say, there is no harm in us waiting two or three weeks. And I, and I will not vote for the motion on the floor.
And you owe this to your constituents, the folks that voted us all in. If this is not, and again, I'm going to address this back to Mr. Bottoms. Will two or three weeks, what will, what will waiting two or three weeks do to our school system? Because we do, Bubba and I both need to make sure that this is not, this is not a detriment, a significant detriment to the flow of our school. We've got to look at everything in our system.
We hire...
What is the harm of waiting two or three weeks at this point?
We hire teachers in July every year.
Are there currently hiring freezes for certain teachers that are waiting for decisions?
The hiring freeze that we have is because of the MAST being in, in limbo, and those teachers have to be, we feel compelled to employ them in our system. And so, we put a freeze on for each one of those teachers in case the, the school did not get funding. We felt like that was the responsible thing to do, is that staff to have a place to go, just like the students.
And I'm sure we, we could all agree on that, but we appreciate you doing that.
If I, if the, if two weeks, really, if there was, there was going to be any guarantees, that there could be guarantees within two weeks' time, it would be a different story. But I know that that isn't possible. That is, that, that allows y'all to maybe go ahead and, you know, save face or do what you, you know, what you want, what you feel.
Travis, Travis, Travis.
Wait, hold on, hold on, wait.
This isn't about saving face. This is about doing our duty.
Yeah, I know. And I know that will feel better. It will feel better to be able to give one last chance, you know, to see if something happens.
Why are none of the other schools being looked at? That's my question. Why not close Bridges? They, they've had chance after chance, and those children have not proven themselves. Why not take the money from there and put it in children that are trying to better their future?
We, we can't, we, we can't talk about our Bridges kids. They are my kids, just like these are. And, and they are being successful.
But where is the, the evidence that all the other schools are being looked at for the same exact thing? Why our school? Why is our school being pinpointed for this? That's what I would want to know.
The early college funding across the state is being, is being withdrawn and held back.
Now, in all fairness, one...
Yeah, but a hundred and twenty-five schools are thriving. Hundred and twenty-five early colleges exist in the state.
And all of them, and all of them are facing the same scrutiny that this early college is...
And I just wanted to answer your question. Yeah, I'm not trying, I'm not, I'm not being, yeah. I, when we do our budget, we do, we do look at everything. This just happens to have a specific funding. It is funded, it is, it is money that we receive solely for MAST. And it was money that we received solely for MAST from the state, as well as our local dollars. That's why we're in such a pinch. All of a sudden, our local dollars are gone, and here we sit.
But whether my child is there or at West Carteret, which I have another child at West Carteret, he still has to be funded. So, why are all these schools that are down east that have no bodies in them not being looked at? Why is that not an issue? I mean, that's a question we all have. There are empty schools down east in this county that do not have students in them. And nobody's talking about that. But all these children sitting here looking at you in the eye are listening to you say that there's no funding in this school. Prove to them that there is no funding in this county to help their school be funded. Prove it. And we will be completely fine with it. But until then...
We, we...
I can't hear very well. Who, who's speaking?
Yeah, that's someone from the audience. We're not supposed to have, we weren't having public comment, but, but I do appreciate...
Well, I did request a public comment. I just, you know that.
No, I don't. Yeah, we, we didn't hear, we didn't hear from, nobody passed that along. But, and we've had it before, so... But, and we've had it before, so I guess that's why it wasn't done for the special meeting. But we are, we are going to have to make a decision on this, one way or the other. And I, is there, is there further discussion among the board right now that we need to reveal?
There's further discussions. Specifically, I want to go back to your comments about, what did you say about the issue with the county commissioners? What were your, what were your counts out to them? What was-
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what you said about listening. We needed to, tell me the reasons why listening to their wishes is of importance at this point, more separate governing bodies?
Was it something to do with the fact that the county commissioners supplied funds to the Carter County Public School System? And they supplied the funding to us, allowed us to keep funding with the recommendation that it be used to fund the lost teaching positions? That's what I said before.
And why do you think it's important, you're saying it's important to follow the recommendation, when clearly, Mr. Mark Mansfield said, "It's not their job up there, it's the Board of Education's job to decide what to do with this money"? If we're fair of retribution somehow, we have a problem with our whole democracy. We can't operate this way.
Well, and clearly, there's support. Two of the commissioners did not approve that motion. So clearly, there's some support by the commissioners to continue this program.
Yes, I appreciate Mr. Farrington and Mr. Comer's vote in that.
Again, two weeks does not hurt anything. And look, I will vote to close Mass in two weeks if we don't have any guaranteed funding from the state, and chances are, we won't, but it does not hurt a thing to wait.
Well, be careful with that statement. You mean, if they come back and say no?
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. If we don't have any state funding, then we can't support it locally.
Right, but if we're still limbo, and we have to wait another week, we need to give this absolute-
If I thought it was a realistic chance, then I would maybe think differently, but I know that that's just, it's like completely unrealistic. I'm being realistic here, and I think that y'all might be being a little bit idealistic and unrealistic on this. So I think this is-
And all the alternative sources, all the alternative sources that we have not even tapped into, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, you know, this is one of their fortes, they fund early colleges. They go out, and this is what they do. We have a look at everything.
And Travis, listen, I'm not trying to mislead anybody. I'm going to say that one more time. If we don't get an additional funding source, I will vote to move funds away from Mass. There's no way we can continue to fund it. But two weeks or three weeks will not hurt anything to wait. It just gives us more time to research different ideas.
And Bubba, hypothetically, if we got guaranteed funding from the state in two weeks, we still have the local-level funding issue, which not only now do we not have the funding from Mass or teachers, but we've got even less than we assumed we were going to have.
Right, and Clark, I appreciate you bringing that up. We found out that this morning, a little bit before 10 o'clock.
No, 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 we knew that, we knew that from the commissioner meeting before about the lack of funding for the, at the local level. We just found out this morning that there was even less than we thought. But we knew on Monday about the lack of the local funding.
But like Melissa says, things are changing so quickly right now. To me, it just doesn't make sense. Why are we meeting today? I mean, what is today all about? It's a false deadline.
No, this was, originally, we had actually asked, I had asked if we could wait until the July 27th meeting, our meeting next week, when it was the budget meeting. And previously, and Matt, if you can back me up on this, previously, Matt has said, we really, that is pushing too late, too late into the summer. We need to get, we need to kind of get this resolved before that time. We need to get people re-registered, or whatever the case may be. And so that's why we are even doing it, we did it this week when we're doing it. And this was even later than was hoped for.
Yeah, and look, and I agree, and Matt told me the same thing. He said, "That's too late for hiring, that's not fair to the teachers, it's not fair to the students." But we're not talking about the end of July, we're talking about the beginning of July. That's all we're asking for, is a couple more weeks. And again, things might not change, and if they don't, we all raise our hands, but I'm not raising it today with the motion on the floor.
Well, then, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and see. We're going to have to see what, how it fares, and if the motion fails, then we will regroup after that, and we will have to figure out a plan B.
Just let me just say that at this point, we have no clear indication as to whether our two primary sources of funding are available, and we haven't even come close to exhausting our secondary sources of funding until we do any vote to end Mass is premature.
Okay. I guess we need to do this by roll call. So do we need to call out our names when we vote in support?
It's probably, well, as long as it's clear in the minutes who's voting, and it's clear, but we do need to have everybody's vote recorded, yes or no. And I do want to just mention that according to the Board of Ed policies, board members are supposed to vote one way or the other on all motions unless they have a conflict of interest. You can't be compelled to vote instead of abstaining, but the policies indicate that every board member is supposed to vote either affirmative or negative on motions.
Well, I'm happy to start, Travis. This is Bubba, and I oppose the motion.
I'll say the motion. What? I'm going to, all right, the motion's going to be restated. Given that the continued uncertainty of state funding required to sustain early college, and given the lack of financial support for Mass at the county level, and given the additional lack of funding to sustain numerous teaching positions in other schools throughout our county, I move that we act on the recommendation of the Board of Commissioners to use local funds previously allocated for Mass to fund as many unfunded teaching positions as possible. This will leave Mass early college, high school unfunded, and will result in the school needing to be closed. So we'll go in order here. Catherine?
Okay. I'm going to vote yes.
I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. McLean?
Nay.
Ms. Ayers?
No, a vote to close Mass now before we have anything we can do to say that it's a travesty, and if there are students and staff and parents and taxpayers at the service, I vote no.
Okay. I vote affirmative. Miss Godwin?
I'm at a question here, Mark. The information we've been getting back and forth just is not enough to give me a yes or no vote. So I'm going to abstain right now.
I think Ms. Gordon had said, go ahead, repeat.
The policy, let me just read from the Board of Ed Policy number 2342. It says, "A member should vote on all issues unless there's a conflict of interest that will be so stated before the vote is taken and the reason recorded in the minutes." Which, I mean, I read that as indicating that-
Funding is the question here. That's what, that's what, there's not enough factors to say yes or no on this.
And abstaining would be a no.
Yeah.
Well, abstaining, abstaining would be no vote, one way or the other, and then you would, the motion, because of the kind of motion this is, it would be carried if a majority of the votes taken are in the affirmative. So.
Do you want to revise?
Basically, that's the way I'm looking at it. I mean, without the-
He's asking for more information.
The information is just not enough, because I called Riley today, and they couldn't give me a iota of information.
Let me ask you that.
Okay, hey, hey, we're both, hold on, hold on now, hold on. Let's-
Jay, you, you, ask him for more time, basically. He doesn't have enough information, he's asking for more time.
Thank you.
So if it's got to be in such a situation, then yes, I would say we need a little more time on this.
So you really said, "No, I don't approve the motion"?
So to, of closing without getting more facts together.
Okay.
Right, he's saying that.
Ms. Gordon, clarification.
So, just to clarify, Mr. Godwin, your vote on the motion is no, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Without that information to complete what I really need to see on paper, the facts.
And Ms. Wheatley?
Given our funding, yes. I'm sorry.
So that is a four-to-three vote, and the motion does pass to fund the locally-funded teaching positions, which will result in the closing of Mass.
What is the procedure to close a school? Can you tell us that, as their attorney?
And what happens if we get the funding? What if it comes through? Where is that going to go?
What is the procedure to close a school?
If y'all like to ask, talk with Mr. Bottoms afterwards, I don't-
The council's not even back till July 8th. Our kids can't be even enrolled in other high schools. There's no, this is ridiculous.
So we, that's why we need to go, that's why we're trying to make this decision now.
No, the council's not here. There's no reason to do this.
Do I have a, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
So shameful. So shameful. Thank you.
Or not, then?